I'm ready to start whenever you are.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, you will need to call the meeting to order.
Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting of October 2nd, 2025, roll call.
Judy Murphy.
Resident.
Jefferson Mitch. Katie Maxwell.
Here.
Chuck Howard. Ken Slaymaker. Ursula Kuzalagi.
Here.
You and Chair Sinilson.
Here. Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda that was written.
What's the agenda? I would actually ask that the motion be made to remove the two general update items.
Oh, we're not gonna do those?
No, there's some stuff behind the scenes that's making it kind of jump in the gut if we were to discuss that tonight.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the agenda with deleting items 7A and 7B.
Correct. I motion to approve the agenda with deleting item 7A and 7B.
Second. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Public comment, do we have? Nobody in the audience, anybody online for public comment?
Nobody online.
Okay, next item, conflict of interest. Anybody have a conflict of interest? No conflict of interest? Item six, approval of the minutes for August 6th, 2025. Let's see if I can have a motion in a second and then under comment we'll make corrections.
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 6th to 2025.
One second. Okay, any comments, corrections? I had one under public comment. The first paragraph. Near the bottom of it, Mr. D A L E S. Supposed to be doubts, a P in it. And that was the only correction I had. Did anybody else have one? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business.
No new business tonight, but if you'd like, I can give a couple of general updates about things going on. Like me too. First thing that we note is that City Hall here and most departments are going to a four day, 10 hour schedule. With Fridays, we hold closed. That's starting Monday, it's upcoming Monday. And City Hall now be open 7:30 to 6:00 and I actually had two people come in to pay water bill between 5:00 and 6:00. So it seems like it will get some use from the public, but I was not able to help them today. So that's just a note to note that for the schedule and if anyone asks. Closed. The next item I wanted to mention, we've been working, I may have mentioned this. Senior housing site that we purchased on Colorado 103 and zoned earlier this year. We have a consultant on board to work on basically getting it ready for shovel ready. And the plan is to have, start working with developers, get a plan in place, things like that. So that basically by the end of the year or a little thereafter, we could hand the project off to someone and start the permitting process and financing and all of that, which is.
So again, real quick, this was paid for by a grant from the state, so we got a $24,000 grant. And I don't know if you got a consultant.
With it shovel ready, is that still looking for monies then too? And if you get another grant or something because of it being shovel ready, you may have priority and be able to do it?
Potentially, yes. And I think like we're obviously still at quite an early stage to say, well, will it be just independent living for seniors? Is there going to be some element of assisted living, sort of those sorts of things? Because that changes financing quite a lot. But we've had some good meetings so far with the consultants and the project support and with some other urban housing for seniors folks like in Eagle County. And so it's, I mean, we're not ready to break, we won't be able to break ground right in February, but we're hoping we're gonna have someone on board working towards getting permits and things like that.
And we're kind of looking at, are we partnering with a firm? Are we partnering with a developer? How does this get managed afterwards? So all that right now is, right now is being fleshed out, what exactly are we looking for? Is it unassisted living, assisted living, or nursing home? Nursing home is probably not. Because that's hard to do. It's probably unassisted living. And then how big facility, how is that managed? Are we partnering with anybody to do that? Or are we partnering with a private developer and we basically come with the land and they foot everything? So we're, all the, we're putting together pro formas right now. And that'll help us kind of decide which is which critical path we'll take. But we should have, you know, by middle of next year, we should have stuff that are ready to put a show in the dirt.
And the key thing will be for this group is that we will have to do a final development plan for it at minimum. And I don't know when that would occur, but that will be critical step one way or the other. And we'll of course have community meeting like any final development plan should. So good opportunity to get neighbors involved and all of that as well. Definitely, you know, we heard during the zoning, we heard some concerns. So anyway, on a similar subject to that grant.
All right, I have a question about that. Is there anything, any information about affordability of that place? Like how are you guys thinking about it?
That is what we're striving to perform as, because we want it affordable. That's our goal, is affordable, right?
Well, that's deed restricted to the affordable senior housing.
Yeah, we acquired the property with that constraint. So that is what's driving their, when, that's the prism we're looking through when we, when we do the performance. And then that will help us decide how do we get there. But no, the whole goal is affordable.
And the two assisting facilities are assisted living, right?
No, they have, they have some programming involved, you know, like Volition from America is involved, things like that. And they have community space and Restore has the one down there, but they are independent living. They don't meet the definition of assisted, even though there are some services.
And once you get above unassisted, you get into statutory definitions. So assisted living and then nursing homes, assisted, those are defined more by statute. And they involve CDPHE and it gets very, very regulated. Unassisted living that's affordable, that would basically be age restricted. You have to be above a certain age and whatever qualifications we have, income level, so on and so forth.
Um, well, you you will need to call the meeting.
Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting of October second, twenty twenty five roll call.
Um Judy Murphy.
Resident.
Jefferson Mitch. Katie Maxwell.
Here.
Chuck Howard. Ken Slaymaker. Uh Ursula Cruzalagi.
Here.
You and Chairson Nielsen.
Here. Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
What's the agenda? Uh. I would actually ask that the motion be made to remove the two general update items.
Oh, we're not gonna do those?
No, there's some stuff behind the scenes that's making it uh kind of jump in the gun if we were to discuss that tonight.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the agenda with deleting items seven A and seven B.
Correct.
I'm motion to approve the agenda uh with deleting item seven A and seven B.
Second. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Coz, no, motion carries. Um. A public comment, do we have? Nobody in the audience, anybody online for public comment?
Nobody online.
Okay, next item, conflict of interest. Anybody have a conflict of interest? No conflict of interest. Uh, item six, approval of the minutes for August sixth, twenty twenty five. Um, let's see, if I can have a motion in a second and then under comment, we'll make corrections.
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August sixth, twenty twenty five. One second.
Hey, any comments, corrections? I had one under public comment. The first paragraph. Um. Near the bottom of it, Mister D A L E S. Supposed to be doubts, a P in it.
Hmm.
And that was the only correction I had. Did anybody else have one? Hey. Um. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, new business.
Um. There's no new business tonight, but if you'd like, I can give a couple of general updates about things going on. Like me too. Um, the first thing that we will note is that City Hall here and most departments are going to uh for a ten hour schedule. With Fridays, we hold closed, that's starting Monday, it's upcoming Monday. And it all now be open seven thirty to six and I actually had two people come in to pay water bill between five and six, so it seems like it will get some use from the public. Um, but I was not able to help them today. So that's just a note to uh note that for the schedule and if anyone asks um closed. The uh next item I wanted to mention, we've been working, I may have mentioned this. Uh, senior housing site that we purchased on Colorado one oh three and zoned earlier this year. We have a consultant on board to work on uh basically getting it ready for shovel ready. And the plan is to have start working with developers, get a plan in place, things like that, so that basically by the end of the year or a little thereafter, we could hand the project off to someone and start the permitting process and financing and all of that, which is
So again, real quick, this was paid for by a grant from the state, so we got a twenty four thousand dollar uh grant. And uh, I don't know, we got a consultant. Yep.
With it shovel ready, is that still looking for monies then too? And if you get another grant or something, because of it being shovel ready, you may have priority and be able to do it?
Um, potentially, yes, and I think like we're obviously still at quite an early stage to say, well, will it be just uh independent living for seniors, is there going to be some element of assisted living, sort of those sorts of things, because that changes financing quite a lot. Um. But we've had some good meetings so far with the consultants, the project support and with some other um rural housing for seniors um folks like in Eagle County. And so it's I mean, we're we're not ready to break, we won't be able to break ground right in February, but we're hoping we're gonna have someone on board working towards getting permits and things like that.
And we're kind of looking at are we partnering with a firm, are we partnering with a developer? How does this get managed afterwards? Um. So all that right now is right now is being fleshed out, what exactly are we looking for? Is it unassisted living, assisted living, or nursing home? Nursing home is probably not. Cause that's hard to do, it's probably unassisted living. Um. And then how big facility? How is that managed? Are we partnering with anybody to do that, or are we partnering with a private developer? And we basically come with the land and they foot everything. Um, so we're tr- all the pro- we're putting together pro formas right now. And that'll help us kind of decide which is which critical path we'll take. But we should have you know, by middle of next year, we should have stuff that are ready to put a show on the dirt.
And the key thing will be for for this group is that we will have to do a final development plan for it at minimum. And I don't know when that would occur, but um, that will be critical step one way or the other, and we'll of course have community meeting like any final development plan should, so good opportunity to get neighbors involved and all of that as well. Uh, can we definitely, you know, we heard during the zoning, we heard some concerns, so. Anyway, on a similar subject to that grant.
All right, I have a question about that, um, is there anything, any information about affordability of that place, like how are you guys thinking about it and?
That is what we're striving to perform as, cause we want it afforded. That's our goal, is afford, right?
Well, that's deed restricted to the affordable senior housing.
Yeah, we we acquired the property with that constraint.
Yeah.
So that is what's driving their when, that's the prism we're looking through when we, when we do the performance. And then that will help us decide how do we get there. But no, the whole goal is afford.
Okay, awesome. And the two assisting facilities are assisted, right?
No, no, they have, they have some programming involved, you know, like Voltares from America is involved, things like that. Um, and they have community space and their store has the one down there, but then they are um, yeah, independent living. They don't meet the definition of assisted, even though there are some services.
And once you get above unassisted, you get into statutory definitions. So assisted living and then nursing homes, assisted, those um are defined more by statute. And they involve C D P H E and it gets very, very regulated. Um, unassisted living that's affordable, that would basically be age restricted. You have to be above a certain age and whatever qualifications we have, income level, so on and so forth. If it's unassisted and maybe we have a community room there where, you know, they can do events or a doctor can volunteer their time and come in.
Provide services.
That's all separate. But if it's run through the facility, at the various levels, you get more and more volatile statute. And constraints and requirements and
Makes it more expensive.
Much more expensive. The facility in Eagle, for an example, which is a higher facility, um, is subsidized to the tune of a million dollars a year. Subsidized to make it break even. Now, that's all the way through independent living to memory care.
Hmm.
But that's a chunk.
Yeah.
So.
But I think we need to really take a look at what the community needs, I mean, we've got two facilities that are just
There's a forty person way to live right now.
Yeah.
For these two facilities.
Well, I think when you get to the other, it's all the medical and everything too, and communities can't support and provide them. I mean, you wish you could, but I mean, like you said, all the raw regulations then come into play, you gotta hire nurses, you gotta have all the different
Yeah, twenty four hour onsite, just stuff like that.
Yeah.
So it it literally goes from kind of being a property manager to being a full nursing facility almost, and that's the spectrum. If you think of it three groups, like we looked, we just talked about this today, we want to come up with definitions that everybody would work with, so yeah, assisted living, assisted living and nursing. Think of those as the three levels that we could potentially provide. And as you get more of the nursing into the spectrum, it just becomes a lot more complicated, a lot more expensive and a lot more regulated.
And Judy, to your point, um, we are going to me and there and Sultan, I think we're planning a guy. Maybe Andy, we're going on the fifteenth to the project support center for their coffee chats to talk about kind of wants and desires and needs for that sort of facility, obviously with the caveat that it's still may just end up being totally independent living, but can there be little elements here and there that will make things better for the community who might end up looking there? So if anyone's interested, it's at ten AM on the fifteenth. I think it's open to the just general public.
I'm not sure.
I think this one.
Yes.
You usually are.
They do monthly coffee chats on various subjects, so. Should be good.
And there's three or more.
What time?
Board members there. Yeah, oh, no, I think we'll probably have just one elected mayor.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And anyway, yeah, okay, well, and and last thing I'll mention on that front is on the subject of that grant we got for the consulting, we recently were, you know, as you all remember, we did the expedited fast track review. Um, that was a requirement from Proposition one to three of the state, and we did like A D U amendments. And both of those were decently certified. And so with the expedited fast track review, that comes with a fifty thousand dollar incentive to be used towards housing projects, that's basically like, hey, let, if we want, we can just amend the scope of that grant. And so we're talking internally about how to best use that fifty thousand dollars, um. So I will keep everyone updated on that, and there might be opportunities for discussion and all that. The first thing we had kind of talked about was maybe expanding this scope to include other city owned sites that potentially could be housing. Try to get those moving forward, but potentially a lot of ways to do that.
So because of all of us fast tracking that and got getting it done, the city got fifty thousand dollars?
Yes. Yes, I mean, so yeah, we basically
He's doing a hell of a job.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
We passed the resolution, um, and then I had to put together, I basically had to put together like detailed checklist for each type of development application that we can then give to developers, which was like kind of a hundred pages of things, and then we put together some like policy documents and things. F A Qs and all that and spit it all that and we're good, so.
Yeah.
Um, there's like one, we're preliminary accepted on the A D Us, I have to like confirm one thing with them, but anyway, that opens us up to potentially more funding. But um that would be A D Us specific. So um, we'll see about that in feature, but ultimately those two actions could ultimately lead to like a hundred thousand dollars worth of money for planning activities.
Nice.
So, um, that's it for me for updates, um, unless anyone wants to chat about anything else. And yeah, no new business, like I said, and no old business that I have either, so.
Okay. Gosh, no new business, old business? Geez, okay. Um, because you were talking about this, guess we will adjourn the meeting at six sixteen PM and go into a work session.
Perfect, well, thank you for that, um, do you, do you, does anyone need a break after the fifteen minutes? Okay, perfect, um.
We'll be after we get it all.
Yeah, you know, I was anticipating and thinking longer, but with that amendment to the uh regular meeting, that obviously simplified the meeting quite a lot. Um, all right, well, the first item on this work session was really brought about by um, Armin, really, Nick. Um, so as you probably know, we have our standards and specifications for God and design and construction document, which basically says here's all the technical and design requirements for driveways and roadways and utilities, all those things. Um. The city engineer is tasked with um, having those sorts of things. And making sure it meets all that, and topic came up on, well, if someone needs an exemption from that, what's the process to do so? And the way that is out, the standards and specification document states is that really the city engineer can do it, but our municipal code says it has to go to variance if it works. And while that does add another layer of sort of oversight over, well, should we allow a eleven percent driveway instead of a nine percent or something like that? Um. It's, variance board isn't necessarily and I don't have the expertise to determine whether that's reasonable or not. So we had a kind of talked internally and said, would we be would you be in favor of amending the code to eliminate variance board review and instead allow uh administrative approval, which would, you know, potentially be the city's engineer, public work superintendent, uh city administrator, something like that.
I read through this and I think it totally makes sense, cause all your boards are volunteer boards anyway, and like you said, you it's hard to say if you would approve a seven percent or a nine percent driveway, so to me it makes sense. It eliminates the process for everybody that makes it more friendly. Anybody else's thought? I didn't have any questions on that. I would say, yes, makes sense.
Okay, well, then I think
So do you have to recommend that to council and go to council board or?
Yeah, I think the next step probably would be we schedule a brief work session item with council and make sure there's no concerns and then bring it back to planning commission for recommendation with the draft.
Who's our city engineer right now? Who do we use?
It's uh through J V A, there are
Yeah.
Long, they've been a long time engineer, so.
I didn't know if we still use J V A.
So um, we typically will refer anything that's um you know, new developments and things like that to them anyway to review civil, and so the whole point of this document is to make sure that they're meeting all the requirements of since it's so technical in nature, it seems like, they either meet it or they don't, and if they don't, then is it still meet the intent of what we're moving towards? The goal, so. Uh, you, I I can't promise that you'll see it at the November meeting, it just depends on how work sessions with council line up, but you'll see a draft ordinance. Assuming councils also ready to move forward. So that's good, I think that's it for me on that one, thank you for the information. So jumping into B, if I might, about comprehensive plan updates, uh, this is just continuing the theme of kind of just presenting initial work that's been done on different elements, I would say the well, the three that I kind of put in the packet today to talk about and get feedback were historic resources, which I've been working with the H P R C on and sites of facility in order of it, because they have a lot of historic expertise. Uh, the housing element, which is ever evolving, um, because there's just so much going on, and then strategic growth, which I'll mention is a new required element that basically says where can like cities have to determine how we can grow without putting a tax, like taxing infrastructure, basically, um, so it goes along with another new element, which is water supply. And basically says like, okay, can you build without doing sprawl, can you identify? You don't have to identify individual parcels, which um, that map I created kind of does, but you have to identify areas that maybe are positive potential for redevelopment or vacant land, things like that, and so it's a, I don't know, going into that one, I think the key question would be what, what, what do you think so far um about like? We've talked about this map before, you know, it's kind of shown that there's a ton of areas of the city that could be redeveloped because of the current zoning. And and what I really would like some feedback on is you know, is that really something that we want to emote in all areas, or is it something that some of the other elements like historic resources or community character maybe outweigh? Um, cause I've heard from the community, it's sort of old, old sides for different areas of the city.
So you're saying should the map more or less be in the showing where these developments could happen, which could be a person's property, right? A existing home that could be a multifamily home.
Ooh, yes.
That's kind of
And I've talked with Dola, you know, the Division of Local Affairs, who's requiring that state legislature, I guess is requiring it, but Dola has to carry it out. They've said we don't need a map like this. We can just identify things much more broadly, but I think what's um, helpful to have, at least at this early stage, is to say like this is like everything right now in the city that could have something more intense on or higher density because of how it zones. We might not include it in the overall plan, but um, I think what I'd really like to kind of talk through is especially the areas in red. Do we really wanna see, like, are we okay with these areas getting redeveloped at higher densities, or do we want to focus more on moving development away from initial thoughts?
I um, I would say if I was a citizen and saw this, I it would be upsetting because you're telling me my house is there, but yet the future of the city in this is saying that, oh, they could plow me down, I mean, I'm just saying that's the way some people would think and
Right.
build multi-family housing, and I would also look at it as block this property. And then I wanna sell it. Is somebody gonna look at this and say, well, wait a minute, I'm not gonna buy that property, you should sell it for less because I run the risk of it being completely developed. So I think it can have different impacts as a property owner, aren't you?
Why you look at it and say I could sell this for more, cause we could put more on it?
Yeah, it it could go by both ways, you're right, yeah.
Well, and this does, like I said, tie to the current zoning map, like, you know, the area um, on the very west side of town, for example, everything identified there is uncommercial. But there's probably four commercial businesses in that area and the rest are single family homes. And so you know, I wouldn't propose putting this map in because people, so exactly to your point, people don't want to see their house shown as like a development opportunity, cause of their house.
Hmm.
Um, but do we think that this is an area that would want to protect from that sort of redevelopment? Because then when we talk about strategic growth, maybe we don't push development that way. Like what areas on this map do we think strategically would be good for growth? I guess that's my question. If any, maybe we're just don't really.
I have a question. The city or developer couldn't come in and force somebody that property was zone commercial or multi-family but had a, you have a single family, they can't force them to sell that, don't they?
No, um, but you know, I would guess, I, it's, it's hard to, you know, this point's a good one, because like right now I could be a developer looking at a zoning map and say, wow, there's eight single family homes, all zone commercial, let's buy them all and build a Trader Joe's. And there wouldn't be, and I'm not for, I'm not necessarily saying we shouldn't I mean, there wouldn't be that much the city could do to to stop that, right?
We want Trader Joe's.
I wanted to say a positive. A negative. But you know, I guess someone could convert their single family home right now into a another class shop or something.
So your feeling on it too is not to put the map in there?
Right, but I think the map is like the map is illustrative of like, we still need to identify zones within the city that are like opportunities for redevelopment, and I think this map is good because it maybe can get us talking about, okay, is that really an opportunity that we want to promote or or not?
Yeah, I think it's a good starting point map for us to think about it, absolutely. Um, I also saw my house there and I was like, what?
Your multi-family is out.
Yeah.
Your house is for multi-family, so if you wanted to convert it into
Yeah, just buy the whole block, you know?
There you go.
Um. So this area, uh Pine Slope area, it's on purple and it says vacant.
Hmm.
Um. Leave it that way. Well, I mean, it it says vacant, but it doesn't mean that it's up for development, is that what's up for multifamily kind of thing, cause we kind of went through that already?
Well, and that is zone single family.
Okay.
But basically, everything in purple there is zone single family, but it's vacant, and so the purple is, this is a vacant site, so someone could and it's within, you know, stone's throw from I said, you know, so that's basically where sort of Creek Highlands that planet developed it is. Um, which I haven't heard anything on in about six months, but um you know, it's like the same with this purple area just west of the ball fields, you know, that's where we um approved the camping use and they'll be coming back at some point to do the annual check in. Um, but that's, even though there are like storage uses on there, I'm considering that vacant and it could be redeveloped. Um.
And that will be, so with that conversation, uh, my thought is that maybe we could be a little more specific, for example, in those areas like the Pine Slope area could be more specific to say it is for single family. You know, and the other purple area by the ball field, be more specific, like this could be multifamily kind of thing.
Right, well, and it's interesting that, well, ball fields don't really say anything, I'm looking at our like character map from the comprehensive plan. It does say um that area by Pine Slope is mixed residential density, which means basically mostly single family. Even though it says mixed residential density, like which written now would say it should be single family. So we kind of have that safeguard to say like, yeah, if you can spend several million dollars into public improvements, you could build
But even then, they proposed when they came out, and I don't think you were around here for that, but they came and they proposed this whole thing, the things that were supposed to do to be able to make it happen and ended up being where it wasn't viable, so I feel like maybe it's an opportunity for us to modify that this that thing, I don't know if we need to be that specific or not to tell the truth, but.
Right, I think the um comprehensive plans were protecting that development from being a multi-family at the end of the day, which is what the comprehensive plan is designed to do, is to say this is what we think is ideal for each area of the city. Um, you couldn't, I mean, I guess we could say that area should just be park. But they're zoned for single families, so it wouldn't really make a difference because they're can build single family, it's zoned for it, but what they could do, but if we could then say, well, we think it should be single family, so we will deny the application for multifamily.
And that's what happened. They did approach us with the multi and that's what we denied it, yeah. So what is it you need to have in this? So it sounds like this isn't what would go in there, but what are, what, what's your feeling on what needs to be in there?
Um, so it says it's required to contain an analysis of vacant and underutilized sites that identifies vacant, partially vacant and underutilized land near existing or planned transit or job centers that could promote basically redevelopment of houses. And so the map clearly shows, here's all the areas that you could redevelop and do infill development, but you don't wanna use a map, so we still have to provide some sort of analysis that says these are areas.
Who picked all these areas, the red?
Um, I put all the areas in, every area in red is an area that has something on it now that is less than the maximum that's allowed. So a single family in commercial one or a single family in multifamily, like Uchi says, or um yeah, ba- basically that, or if you had like, it's an industrial site and it has like some little retail shop or something.
Um, could we, I mean, a difference that I find between the things that are red that I'm seeing right now, I'm thinking about my house, my block, my area where it has homes, you know, uh, built homes. And there's an area south uh east where, for example, where the uh trailer parks are.
Right, yeah, it's kind of behind Colorado Boulevard.
Yes, so my thought is I see a difference between those two, like the trailers are, I mean, I'm not trying to say we should get rid of trailers, but that's a uh less of a permanent structure. So I feel like maybe that could be a differentiation that we make.
Could be one of the potential developments and not the residential parts, yeah, I get what you're saying. I think that's not a bad idea. I don't know if you could get in trouble for that, but also any of the vacant lots, of course, you would keep red.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, what?
Are there, are, are most of the reds want them C twos? Is that what you're saying?
Um, well, the reds that are right near um the historic downtown like north of Colorado Boulevard are zoned for multifamily and they're single family. Pretty much everything on the east of that is zoned commercial. Um, but I think, Uchi, your point maybe is a good one. Everything kind of in the center of this map are like old existing neighborhoods. Everything kind of on the west and the east are kind of these mixed use areas already because there's a mix of residential and commercial. Is that maybe a better way of identifying it because it's already kind of a mixed use area, so maybe it will be easier to redevelop? Or is that not really what you're saying?
Um, I mean, that could be an option. I was thinking more like trying to see of like the permanency of the structure. As a way of thinking. And I also noticed the community garden is there, but it's on park now. So I think that needs to go.
You've got good eye, well, you're zooming in.
Yeah, it's a specific shade that I recognize.
No fear, I'm looking at it like.
That would've been an oversight.
The zoning changed only a little bit ago.
That's right, yeah. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I think you I come up with what we all just talked about.
I like how Uchi's comments got us to where Dylan is of we have these spaces that are very mixed use or, you know, multi-purpose and so why not highlight those without I, it sits a little wrong when we're talking about people's homes, even whether they're permanent or not permanent. Um, and so veering away from that language, I mean, this is a little bit better, but it's that same concept of
Right, you would rather locate it that way, yeah.
Where they're located is more potential for growth, more potential for change and growth because of what's already there.
But you're saying you don't need the map, so you have to state it. Put that in wording, yeah.
Right, that would better align with what our current um land use map looks like. Because just for, sorry with you to keep using you as an example, but like your house is not, like our character area for basically everything north of Colorado Boulevard is like mostly single family. Is the desirable use as of twenty seventeen.
Right.
And uh, I'm not really proposing to change that because that is like the most historic part of Vito Springs, um, whereas looking at the east end only the like homes along um, you know, like in the vicinity of the visitor's center are really identified as should stay single family. Pretty much everything on the east end is like, well, if it needs to be redeveloped um, there's an opportunity for that, and that dates back to twenty seventeen. So it, it, it sort of sounds like maybe the desire is not to reinvent the wheel too much from, from back then. Is that there to say?
Yeah.
Now, also thinking about those blocks around my house, I'm like, there's a couple of churches. I think I guess the churches, but I'm like I don't know if at some point I don't know, they won't be able to be maintained or whatever and they can be, I don't know, maybe they decide to sell them, like part of the United church was sold and turned into a house, so I just don't know, I thought that I had it, maybe that's another
Keep them.
Like layer or characteristic that we're looking at that is like, okay, this is not a home and it's a building that
Potentially could be.
Yeah, lock and have it with it.
Yeah.
I wonder if um those churches, some of them are pretty large and could make a really cool multi-family. Like small multifamily development while maintaining the structure.
But they're, right now, they're all being used as churches.
Yeah, yeah, or community centers, yeah.
But they could be labeled in this, is what you're saying, as potential redevelopment at some point, I mean, who knows, I mean.
Like, I mean, if we're just noting things that are there. Well, like a, a wish, but just different things in them.
Okay, you got enough on that?
Yeah, I think that actually plays quite nicely into the other two elements because, and I kind of paired them together all three of them because I do think they go together. It's like historic resources and charm and character housing. Um, and so I've been working with the um HPRC on some, they want, they have basically everything that came in the historic resource elements objectives came from the HPRC as like new goals and new objectives and all that, and you can see there's quite a lot of red because they were very um, and they're really, you know, I kind of lead into our third discussion item that we can touch on briefly later, but they've kind of said like, we really, really want to, we really think that this, the history of the town and the character of all the existing buildings and things and like urban core of the city should continue to be protected, like that should be a key goal in the city, and I've heard from people a lot like, oh, you know, yeah, of course we need apartment housing and things like that, and of course we want economic growth and all this, but we don't wanna lose the feel of the town. And so I guess my question on the historic resources is, are these any, any comments or feedback or anything like that so far, or um I will be continuing to refine that with HPRC as well. Haven't, haven't had a lot of feedback.
So are you talking about where they want some of the guidelines put more into the code? Are you talking about the cop plan still?
Uh, the cop plan still. But they do kind of tie together.
Yeah.
You know, the historic resources is really the thing I heard about most from the community.
Is there a way to specify that new buildings have to conform to the nature of the, of the neighborhood? So that they're built with historic looking?
I think we already do that. We, we do, and I think our third work profession item, which I'm happy to just jump, jump to and start talking about if you're okay with that, is like that HPRC, and I think actually I've talked with quite a few members of planning commission who, who, you know, I think housing is still a big topic to talk about and how do we promote more housing, but also how do we make sure the housing fits with what's already here? Because, you know, we've had a lot of discourse that says like, we need X number of units in the next five years, and it's like, if that's for the situation and all this, with the regional housing needs assessment and all that, but then people say, well, but we don't want it to like take over the town because then it makes the town feel very different. And so HPRC has said, hey, so the first thing that I'll mention is that two-block buffer that has, I, I've like talked about this buffer so much in the past few months. Basically, within two-block radius of the historic downtown, we have a section that says um if you're building within this section of town, this two-block radius, then you need to basically be compatible with the historic district guidelines. But it's technically a recommendation not, like, we can't force someone to follow historic district rules because they're not in the historic district, so and then a point has come up, which, you know, maybe some feedback on this would be good to see what you think is really, whether you're in a two-block buffer of the historic district or not, every new development changes the kind of historic character of the city, you know, and using the fieldhouse apartments as an example, they're not in a two-block radius, but when people come into town now to go to the historic district, they see really large buildings. Um, so my kind of thought is would we want to consider amending various sections to require more architectural design guidelines for new construction?
Can you just name a couple of what those guidelines are?
So like a good example would be, which we have in the code already, um maybe it's not a great thing, but it says, if you're building a new home, that new home can be no more than fifty percent bigger than other homes within a hundred and fifty feet of your property. And that's in the code now, and basically it says, okay, well, the average in a hundred and fifty foot diameter is thousand square feet, so you don't want to build fifteen hundred square feet. Um, but what it doesn't do is say, hey, what height can, you know, like right now we have a thirty-five foot height limit. I don't think there's a single house in town that's more than twenty feet, twenty-five feet, and so like, right now I could dock down my house, build a thirty-five foot tall, like super skinny
Very modern.
House, super modern, and um, so we really, unless you're in the historic district, do not regulate what your house can look like. As long as you meet thirty-five foot height limit and you meet setbacks. You do regulate multifamily. But there's an art, I think people are in fieldhouse, not to pick on them, but they're the only real big multifamily development in the last eight years. Um, they meet, we have multifamily guidelines or rules that say you have to have, you know, certain the stuff like breaks in the facades and certain um, you know, materials and all that sort of stuff, but a lot of people are arguing that and you know, it got approved, y'all approved them, but a lot of people are saying, well, yeah, it was approved. It has varied building forms and orientations and roof lines and all this, but it doesn't fit the town. And so HPRC has kind of said, well, what if we take the um, kind of guiding principles of the architecture that is historic in town and put that into our architecture guidelines for new buildings. So you say, well, here's the like key elements of late Victorian architecture. Um your multifamily building needs to contain, you know, like substantially meet these elements.
Just within the two-block radius, or people want that, they want the town to stay.
I guess I would say definitely in the two-block radius, but there's an argument, I think, that people around town and the HPRC is making that like development on the west end of town, we're small enough, it still has an impact, the town is whole and the historic district, so the question is, you know, how far do we think we wanna go is, is kind of something, we historically have done very limited control design. Would Planning Commission potentially be comfortable regulating that more strictly? For new developments?
My thought is some of it's good, some of it's bad. I definitely don't think it goes through the HPRC because it's not in the historic district and we don't want it that strict because you also don't wanna turn away new development or make it difficult for a homeowner to wanna upgrade something because it becomes very costly. Um, I think having some guidelines are good. But it depends what they are. I mean, you don't wanna get into the type of fence, the color you can paint your house, I mean that's a lot of what you, I don't know if Georgetown's still like that, but was like that, yeah, and
And all those new apartments, they see.
No, don't, they don't fit, they don't.
Yeah, they basically, Georgetown basically has three different overlay zones and it's like the historic downtown overlay and then an overlay that's kind of like a buffer.
Yeah.
And then like rest of the city. And so those new condos or whatever, like rest of city kind of do whatever you want, you know, and I, we have said, we're not doing that because you're essentially rezoning people's property.
Yeah.
But if we said citywide, we want to include more architectural design and like multifamily buildings so that they, you know, sort of don't overpower the architecture that's already here, is that we can do that without rezoning because it applies to.
But my first question is, what type of architecture are talking? You mentioned Victorian. I don't naturally, I mean, I don't see everything as Victorian. I also look at things as mining. And to me, those are two different designs right there, so who makes the decision as to what is what we're really looking for? I mean, who's the expert on it or who? I, I don't know.
Who chooses this?
Yeah, who, who picks and chooses that, okay, you're doing a mining theme, you're doing a Victorian, you're doing a modern one, I mean I, I think it's a tough road to go down. I think having some that are simple and more appropriate. Um, like you, we already have breaking up of the lines, maybe not. We could definitely put a height restriction on it. I didn't realize our houses, gosh, we could do that.
Yeah, pretty much, citywide, there's not a single lot in the city that you could not build thirty-five feet.
For a house, but a commercial building, anything else is thirty-five feet.
Oh, yeah, it's all thirty-five, in industrial it's forty-five, but that's like basically only on the far east side.
So I think some of the simple ones, yes, but not.
Yeah, I kind of feel the same, like I don't, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you right now yes to this and not to that, but I feel like looking into it and see things that are not like extremely telling people what to do.
Because in
But I mean, kind of.
And not to pick on Uchi again, though we're picking on Uchi, but look at your place compared to the house across the street from you.
Yeah, right next to it.
Yours to me looks like the Victorian, yours looks like the mid-century modern door. So it's, well, but that's what I'm saying, so beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I, it's gonna be hard to tell everybody.
That's what makes, in my opinion, that's what makes a city or a town unique, right? Instead of coming from a place where you could walk down a block and every house was totally different, it made it really fun to walk down that block. Because it was all, you could see people's character was clean still, it was, you know, put together, they weren't run down, they were just different, that's not bad.
But something, for example, that I think they might be worth
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Uh, is like the thirty-five foot, I mean, I've always like, well, no, it's, it's, it's the right, whatever, but I'm, you're right, after seeing that gigantic stuff over there, it's like maybe certain places could have thirty-five, like if you're close, you're by the mountain, yeah. You know, but if your surroundings You know, but if your surroundings are like no more than, maybe you kind of have to go by the average, things like that. I feel more comfortable, but.
Yeah, it's a hard question, right? So it's a very broad question of. Gets into more than just. Yes, it's easy to say thirty five, but it gets into the culture, the true culture of the town.
Right.
Do the hut houses, are they thirty five or what?
The habitat for community ones, yeah, they're um. They're like thirty two, thirty one, thirty two, so they could have all.
See, and they don't look, yeah, they don't look. Yeah.
Yeah, and whereas like there's like Riverbend is a good example. That's pure thirty five feet. These are also thirty five feet, but then kind of sticking out right next to the highway. Makes them look so much bigger.
And Riverbend is more like skinnier, so you it's not so giant.
And I remember everybody had anxieties about Riverbend and now it doesn't even faze you. You go by it. It looks.
That's what happens every time.
It fits within the area.
Comes part of the town itself.
Yeah.
And it becomes part of the culture, just like the history.
Kind of major change something so it fit more to the city, you know.
This is good feedback because I do think there's some latitude in the code already to. Just from a. As a review goes forth, like there's probably enough latitude to push for. People to. Better match their neighbors, I suppose. Like a big fear that people have is you drive some of those neighborhoods in Denver. You've got cute bungalow, cute bungalow, cute bungalow, huge square duplex. Huge square duplex and then bungalows. And so like people in Denver, a lot, well. People in the historic preservation industry and people up here that I've talked to have said, we don't want that because. Like where these cute little homes that were built during mining, we don't want to see these modern homes, all this. So I think like some of that is. Why this comes up. Um, what? And really, you know, thinking about what the historic preservation groups have said is they're not too concerned about. Single family necessarily. They think that the best way to preserve. Character of single family homes is to push very hard for residential local designations. There's, you know, I, there was a resource survey plan done in twenty twenty two. That basically did a initial survey of every property in town. For example, Uchi, yours is considered modern movements and it has high integrity, which means it's a good example of. The modern movements architecture. My house is considered late and Gordian and only a middle kind of like moderate integrity, so.
And our houses aren't even considered.
No, the person who built her house built my house. Yeah, it's it's it used to be.
The stuff on uh, most of the houses on, to my view, they say are possibly modern movements and kind of be unknown.
Okay, my. Modern movements.
I think because it was built after it like. The nineteen nineties, they are kind of like, there's a bunch of architectures and then let's just lump it in because like. We don't care about it from a historic designation standpoint. So I think the bigger question is like. Do we want to do anything to better protect that buffer area, which I think. Historic preservation groups have said is very important. And is there anything we want to see different going forward from? Multifamily, because single family, there's ways to. Promote kind of like local historic districts and things like that that, you know, already we could do. And this kind of brings me to my next question is. There's a lot of housing stuff going on right now. That has been talked about as like potential things to work on. And I'm kind of thinking like we're doing this master plan update. Is it better to kind of just focus on that? And like throw these ideas into the comprehensive plan and. Rather than keep pushing forward with potential code amendments? Or are there code amendments that? Like on the housing front incentives and things like that, that maybe. You'd still want to be working on in the next few months.
I'm trying to find my notes. I liked your housing incentive idea that you had.
From a little while ago. Oh, right, like the points rating sort of thing?
Yes.
Yeah, that was an idea that was brought up by Kent. Really, and we talked about a little bit in the past and. Um, there's a few places that do that. Just it's required, you like do the point system if you want to do anything. And there's other place, and they basically say like, okay, well, if you want to develop this site, you have to meet. You have to get a certain number of points and you get points depending on how closely you match each thing. And it ends up being quite subjective, but. I was thinking, I think it is still a good idea because in the past we talked about incentive programs to give people more density or give people a parking reduction or whatever. What what do you think of that as an idea?
I like the idea. I don't like the word points and like you said, because then it becomes selective, but. I don't, I don't know how you would do it, but to encourage, hey, you could, you know. Or maybe you have these five bullet points here and five here and you need to do. Seven out of ten of them.
Right.
Or I, I mean, that's back to putting it in the code.
Yeah.
To try to entice people to do it that way, but not telling them they have to do it that way. And could there be an incentive? Yes, I don't know what the incentive would be. If you gave them points, what do the points do to them? That's part I didn't understand.
Well, I think it would be like, okay, let's say we have these environmental things like conservation and like affordability and. All the guards and transportation facilities and. Whatnot, you know, like we could think fifteen things that we care about or five things. And the points would be like, okay, how many of these things do you hit? And you only get this incentive or that incentive if you hit a certain percentage or something. And so then. The idea being, this is how they do it mandatorily in other communities and they say, well. We care about a lot of these things, but a lot of them are sort of optional. So as long as you're. You can design a, it's what you want to do, but you have to do a certain amount or we will deny it.
So they could say they're gonna build. A building or a house next to a Victorian house. The incentives could be, maybe you'd get a lower tap fee because you're leading. The neighborhood.
Yeah.
Looking like because it's got this, this and that. If you put, I don't know, solar on it or something or all those. Those the type of incentives. I think you referred to Breckenridge does that, right?
Right, but Breckenridge requires. Like they're like, we're not gonna let you do anything unless you hit a certain number of. These things, whereas like a place like. For Collins I was reading about today. They have an affordable housing program that basically says if you can do this or this or this or this. Then you get this incentive or this incentive or this incentive. And it's like. Like they kind of say, okay, we will give you a development incentive of. A density bonus if or a parking reduction or what have you, if you meet certain rental area median income. Numbers. Or, you know. For example, they say like, okay, if you have ten percent of your units at sixty percent AMI or twenty percent of your units at eighty percent AMI, a lot of percentages. Then we'll give you. Parking reduction. And if you don't do it, then. We won't give you that deduction and that kind of incentivizes people to put affordable housing into their project. Without us having to like force them to do it. It's kind of like, we want you to do these things, but. We're letting you come to the table to do it rather than the inverse.
So we're talking more multifamily homes right now than. Single.
That's what's simply more people would do, but. Like I think Kent's idea, and I don't want to speak for him because he's not here, but like Kent's idea was more the Breckenridge model where it was like, hey, you want to build. Five thousand square foot, single family home, great, but you, but if you don't do like this. Enough of these things, then it's you're not getting food for it. But I think in function, it works more for a multifamily or commercial.
I I I like it. I don't know how. Difficult that is to come up with a program and then how much approval do you have to go through to get the incentives?
Right.
Um, and what the incentives would be, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, what, I think a water taps, but pretty much every property in town has water taps, so that's not one that.
Sure. But I guess if you, if Uchi wanted to knock down her modern movements, high integrity home, then build a quad, like a quadplex.
Uh huh.
You know, we could say, hey, you need three taps now because you only have one.
This is true, and you could maybe get one free. I I think it's a direction to go. Um, I don't know how fast you have to do it or something and. I kind of like it and it kind of falls into. What HPRC was asking for, putting some restrictions or guidelines on the way you build something or you're not necessarily getting into. The theme or the character of the home, but it could be stated. I don't know, you have to have. The heights of it, like we said, I don't know what else.
That makes me think like the way I was thinking in my brain. I was trying to think, remember about all these um characteristics that they have to, you know, um. How you could, when you do a, when you do an presentation about someone applying, they have to like check certain. Things, right? Um, so one of them is like, that's a magic characteristics of your neighborhood or whatever. So the way I was thinking, my brain is like, okay, so maybe we it will be. Good for us to look at. The options we already have in the code. And maybe see how we might be missing some or how we can like buff up others, you know? And then maybe if you have any other ideas, maybe the uh HPRC brings up and we can look into them and decide if. We think it's applicable or too much or not, whatever. Then my brain does, that way we can have an idea what we already requesting, so we're not like. Reinventing the wheel in a way and just trying to make it stronger. If you want to.
Yeah, and with certain ones, like, let's say you're building in. An area town that is all Victorian, and so people really want to stay Victorian, but you really don't want to stay Victorian. And so would some have like? Extra points to them? So for that, it'd be like five points to stay Victorian as one, you know?
Yeah.
And like, how is it? Cause then it doesn't really matter, right? If it's one point to stay Victorian, but you don't want to stay Victorian, so you don't do it. Now you have a modern home. I don't know, am I going?
My neighbors would shoot me. I'd build the most modern one and things you can imagine.
I wouldn't, I'd actually be like, it's a cute little bungalow. I would think it'd be awesome. It'd be some different.
Building off of Uchi, I think like, the thing that I, one thing that I like about it is. If we tell people ahead of time, these are things that we'd like to see and things that can get you bonuses, then it's clear to them like this is what we want rather than. Like people having to go in circles because we're like, well, your multifamily home like. Doesn't have enough of a, like your roof is too steep or something like it gets sometimes very arbitrary. I mean, it's not arbitrary because it's in the code, but people often are like, ah, this is just. Red tape bureaucracy, like you're really gonna hold up a project because like. You know, this thing is off slightly and if ahead of time we can say, maybe it's not even a code amendment, maybe it's just like a policy thing that says. If you want to develop in town. It doesn't have to be coded as incentives.
I like the word bonuses. That. You, here's the bonuses you get if you do this, this and that, like you said. And here's the list of things.
But well.
I don't.
And I'd like to.
Incentives sounds more professional, I guess.
And I wanted to ask you also, you mentioned about, and I don't know if it's. A separate question, I think it was, uh, about keep going. Looking at everything and bringing out things and modifying the code or just go through it and. Can you explain that again? Am I, or am I completely off?
I think he was thinking that maybe not even changing the code and making it a policy, but. You want to see what's in the code listed already, which I would too.
Well, I was just thinking that as a way for us to have this conversation and and for me, I'm very visible person, so visual person, so that'll help me. But um, I was, I was confused, I guess, about. You were mentioning something about just keep going through the comprehensive plan. Is that what you meant? And and keep notes of the things that we're noticing until a certain point where we go to the code or you think it.
Yeah, I think like, because the point to me of the comprehensive plan is one to say like, hey, developer who wants to do something. This is what our vision is for that property, but then the other side of it is to say, hey, city. These are the things that the community wants us to work on and achieve over the next five to ten years. So. The question, I guess, is, is there anything housing related or any of these topics that we've been talking about for the last few months that? We really want to push forward with. ASAP. Or are these more things that we should maybe consider just putting into the comprehensive plan as goals and objectives and strategies?
Yes.
And then continue just. Moving forward with the comprehensive plan with those goals in mind.
I guess my question is, just never having done this before, will the, once a comprehensive plan is done, does that change, does that impact code?
Uh, well, so comprehensive plan should be implementable. That's a word.
Yep.
So like I think at the end of, before we adopt the comprehensive plan, and I don't know if this was done last time. But part of the plan should be like an implementation schedule. To say like, here's our top priority items for the next. Two years or something, and here's the things that we'd like to get to, but if we don't get to them, fine, and we'll roll over to the next update. And here's the things that. You know, are just like, like things we have to work on in that.
It's a strategic plan for this.
Right, yeah, and so. Because I've, you know, I have. Only so much time in in the day and, you know. I'm kind of thinking like, okay, I talk to people a lot and they're always like. Let's work on this or let's work on that or let's work on this. And so like I could be working on like fifty code amendments right now. So is there anything we've, so so that was kind of the question is like, do we want to, are these things that we've been talking about? Able to be put on the comprehensive plan implementation timeline? For future projects?
I think they're visionary. And the visionary helps the person that comes, I mean, I don't know how many people do it. If you move to a community. I want to look at your comp plan before I move here or a developer, I want to look at your comp plan, what's the vision? Kind of the character of the city. So if you're. Saying, you know, future development ideas are. Building. Within city. I don't know how to word appearances or themes or whatever.
I I would say like. Sense of place or design setting or something, maybe.
Um, and you list those things that we've just all been talking about, like what you're thinking, but. To sit there and go and change a code right now? No, because I don't less.
No, I'm glad there are things, I mean, because you also were mentioning that there's a lot of people looking into development and stuff, so I feel like unless there's. Very poignant thing that we're like, okay. Before anybody builds anything, let's address this one issue and like then. The first one that comes to my mind is the thirty five foot thing. You know, because of what we were just talking about the other development and it's. It's gonna sound really bad because the development that I'm thinking about is right in front of my house, so I'm not trying to be like.
Well, I'll say HPRC is thinking of that development.
Okay.
Thinking. Do we need to do anything? They're not seemingly out that development, but it's indicative of like. Certainly not, but I think like they saw. Some of the things that have been approved around town in the last five years and it's like, okay, do we want like, can, will we accept? Three more of those things over the next two years.
And that's kind of what I was thinking. I mean, again, I my 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 mind, like whatever they build, this is gonna be healthy, it's gonna be good for me, whatever. I I'm not gonna have an opinion of whatever they build in front of my house.
And that's in the buffer, so the buffer is much stronger than the rest of the city. So, anyway, so that's kind of it.
But I was just thinking about the massive buildings over there and just imagining. The whole block being thirty five foot tall. Obviously, it's not gonna be like that, but. That's the one thing it's like, oh man, is that gonna be a bad thing right in an intersection? You know, it's gonna be this and everybody, no, and again. I don't, I don't know, but that's the one thing that kind of comes to my mind. It's like, well, maybe that is one thing that we do want to address about, or at least move.
I would, I agree with that because, you know, it's. Sure, those buildings look massive. Sure, those buildings look massive and stuff and like you said, eventually it's gonna blend in and stuff, but it's one of those that. Yeah, there's so many other places that this could happen to. And what happens, I mean, it's the same with the clinic, all of a sudden. When they start grading everything, that grade goes way up because that thing, when we first approved that. Never was gonna set that high either and does it look that high now anymore? No. But I think to put something in there definitely.
But it has a highway and exit, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Well, and we have to, like, I have to make a balance because. Like the two things we think about is housing, history, I think is like things I hear this whole time, bless commuters. Uh, we need housing and we need to protect our heritage and all of that and. If you say like thirty-five feet allows you to get three stories, that could be another twenty housing, so forty housing, that's a lose because. Can you live with that now?
Heritage is only as good if the city still thrives. Right? And so in order to thrive, there has to be not, we don't wanna, it might have been, I kind of, we had to have some growth and. As I said, we, I mean, the buildings were approved by everybody, right? It was chosen by the, by city and.
Yeah, you know, like they said, they put the lines and everything in, yeah, it all came to all of us and.
So essentially then we keep looking at them as this really detrimental thing when it was chosen.
Supposedly when they're all painted and everything, it's all supposed to blend differently and you figure the parking's not there, the green's not there yet. So they've got a long ways to go yet, I mean, it seems so aesthetically. You know, when you looked at their drawings and stuff, it looked way better, I mean, it's. There again, up, you didn't buy, yeah, um, I don't know, but I, what do you wanna do?
It's not a very good conversation.
I have one more question. Can there be some way of incentives for solar or wind turbines or. The special glass now that's in your windows that produces energy?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see that as one of the potential, if there was a point system, environmental. Cons, like conservation and energy efficiency could, in my opinion, be one of those.
And maybe you just in the comp plan put the city is, is, um. Moving towards. An incentive program for future development commercially and residential. And that may have some of these. Things and make a list of things and leave it at that. And then as far as putting them in policy and whole, whole, um, code and procedure, I think. Like you said, let's see what we have in there. See if there's something we need to tweak right away and get that height restriction in there, so. At least we're, because that'll take two years, that list of us with meetings to ever implement anything. Yeah, there was.
Well, if it takes two years, that change.
No, that's what I mean, we would address that, look at the list that we do have now. And see if there's something to tweak it, but then really start working on that as far as maybe really coming up with that incentive type program. Does that make sense? Do you like it?
Yeah, that works for me, I mean, honestly, like.
I can't tell by his reaction.
Well, the thing is, you know, like, I, there's a lot going on and I hear ideas from. A lower view, I hear ideas from council, I hear ideas from HPRC now and sites and facilities and all this stuff. And so it's good to. Be able to have all of you talk in circles for. And not really have a good answer because I certainly don't have the answer and I, I think my job is to make sure that. You know, like you're all appointed to. Plan for the, you know, future of the city, all that as well as me, so my job is to. Implement the things that council and planning commission and the other boards. Are pushing for.
Do you like our, do, your circles?
This is good direction, um.
Can I ask a question? What, is there a, you know, thirty-five too tall? Based on other cities or other places, is there a good height that people are proposing they want it or?
I mean, it's really hard to say, like thirty-five is a really typical height, I think, like. But I don't know how it can be in the city, because like you look around town, I would guess there's. Ten buildings that are thirty-five people, maybe. Like I'd say, let's just say close to thirty-five, health center, Argo. The, the. To new apartments, maybe habitats close. Um, even Safeway is not very tall.
I think the senior center, isn't it?
Yeah, Mitchell Way.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially on the backside. And, and, um. Cause like even the motels on the east end are shorter.
I think you brought it, you just said something kind of interesting. You said on the backside. One of the things about your height requirement, I think we were talking about is how it's measured. And so that may be one thing you look at to. You, you know, thirty-five feet from one measuring. Methodology could be different than thirty-five feet from a different method.
And there's some specification, I think, on the code, the height we measure that.
Right, there is, yes, there is a very, yeah, it's very clear how we measure it, but it does lead to. Strange calculations. As a good example to that Summit County, they say, and that gets the point about the health center is. Wellness center, they say, okay, take your. Tall, every, like six points on the building, the six tallest points, measure to directly below that. And we're going to measure to the more restrictive of finished grade or natural grade. And so like. In the example of the Riverbend. I don't know, in the example of the wellness center, they increased the grade. So we're not taking thirty-five feet from the increased grade, we're taking it from what it used to be. And so that makes for much more restrictive heightened measurements than what we have.
See, and when you first look at that, you think they took it from the top and then went up. That they, that's the way I think it was.
Well, and like for a roof like that, that's like a pitched roof, you take it from the average, like the midpoint, you don't take it from the. Like the way it's calculated, you don't take it from the apex, which is odd to me, but. That's the way the code is, so like technically speaking, the. Peak roof line of these buildings are probably over thirty-five feet, but based on how our height is calculated.
I thought it was said that it had to be at the peak. I think that I, for some reason, I remember.
Could be for that one, maybe because that is a planned development, so that could be, but yeah, height for like your average.
And I think, and, and there is a good learning thing and that's something to look at in the future too, is maybe. The mass of it, if it's this wide, you can't go thirty-five feet. Because I think that's what throws it off so much is because it's just so. Long and then thirty-five feet, when you compare it to the wellness center. Where it's like a more squared off building, it's not as massive looking anymore with it being. The same height.
Yeah, I mean, it's like you look at a grain silo, you don't think, wow, a huge building, like it's a high building, but it's narrow. And then like the school, you don't think of it as this huge massive building because it's all like.
Until they put a thirty-five feet up in front of her house, but it's a big rectangle.
Okay, well, is there anything else that you want to, um?
No, we're going around circles.
Well, I'm, I'm very happy with the discussion, so thank, thanks you all for hanging out and, but, um. Yeah, so that's quite good, um. No, um, if we don't have any regular meeting items. Do you want to meet in November to just have another work session about comprehensive plan stuff? Or would you rather push it off to the first week of December?
I think it's up to you if you need clarification on the comp plan or not, um. I saw a few corrections in here or questions, but I can talk to you about that, we don't have to do it now, just little notes. Cause this is your draft stuff, right?
Yeah, and this is like, I would say it's like.
It's good.
Not like strongly edited, I guess, like I'm trying to.
Oh, it's pretty dang good.
You're adding a lot of things that, yeah, are missing.
Yeah, I.
Well, and like the strategic road though, I mean, it's brand new, like all of that is just totally new from scratch. Whereas the rest of the stuff, I am trying to just update facts and data and then update goals.
No, I'm not very good.
Um, so I will continue to do that and I will present a few more sections next time and then. My plan will be maybe in December to like say, okay, here's all of the goals. Like just do a table, basically, it's like, here's the old goals for this section. Here's the new proposed ones and do that for each section and it'll just be like a table. Um, because I do think that's really the meat of it, besides the like, here's what we want to see on each spot, it seems like the meat is, here's our goals.
Okay, so what does everybody think, November? Uh, do you wanna leave it open right now in case something comes up? Like why didn't these go?
I would rather not say.
Probably yes, but okay.
Um, I'm happy to chat about it more later if you like. Okay, well.